I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we do thank you, Lord God, for your presence among us in these meetings. We thank you, Lord, for, we know that we depend upon you greatly for everything. And, Lord, we ask your presence here tonight. We invite you in our meeting, Lord, to lead us and guide us and keep us in harmony. Lord and Father, thank you. In Jesus' name, amen. We have the treasurer's report.
Treasurer for October 2025. City Clerk got 230.5. City Treasurer got 277.05. The street light bill was 345.10. Legion Hall light bill was 95.43. Dylan did building check at $15. I bought the herald for the thank you ad was $20. Dale shoots for supplies 21.83. Ad partner fuel bill 35.01. I bought the garden home supplies. We still have a credit of 13.71. Nikki for trucking tree $100. Leading us to the balance of $9,498.55.69. On the water side, our waste operator $100. Our water operator $200. Our meter reader was $100. The barn electricity $29. Bomb house $34.87. We used 182 units of water at $291.20. Our debt was 430. Our Kansas Health Labs $120. Our Kansas revenue water fees $20.58. With the current balance of $21,821.44. I also have the bill for the lagoon for the critters $250. This needs to be approved.
Have any questions on the treasurer's report? Okay, if not, uh, we can motion to approve the treasurer's report, is it? Okay, all in favor? Okay, the bill for...
The critters from lagoon. They got one muskrat and three coons. Yeah, where I forgot that last name. It's for $250. It's for Ed. It's A-A-T-H-E-R-E-N-S.
Five dollars over debt, maybe fifty dollars more, is that?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the bill for Ed Cattens for...
200 people.
All in favor? Okay, we have a reading of minutes.
Alright, so Mayor, any due to sign the September minutes that have corrections on it? October 8th, City Council lines since October 6th, 2025. The 8th City Meeting came to order at 7:00 PM. Mayor Joe Foster started the meeting with a pledge and prayer. We had five council members, eight guests, treasurer, Shelley Dodge and city clerk Vicki Schutz. Vicki read the minutes from the September meeting. Dale asked to put the Legion Hall into the pouring and add Sharon Willie and Tracy Sharp from state from voting on the Legion Hall contract. Sharon Willie made a motion to approve the September minutes and Tracy Sharp motion, or seconded the motion, motion carried five to zero. Shelley Dodge read the treasurer's report with the upcoming bills and other bills that had come in as well. Tracy made a motion to accept treasurer's report. Sharon seconded, carried five to zero. Under old business, Vicki talked to the superintendent of people through schools about emergency procedures and will collaborate with him that proceed with plan. The Powhatan church is only used for tomato purposes only. Will continue to collaborate with the Kikapu about different options for emergencies. Shirley Ashton mentioned that the pole, the shelter house needs to be straightened. The city is just waiting on for a price. Dale talked about tip top tree service, giving an estimate to pay down the trees for $8.50 per tree for a total of about $3,400. After discussion, the city wanted to get dids out. After more discussion, we already had $2,000 from the beautification and a thousand from the roof, or from Roger Ruth, Roger and Ruth Wolf Grant already set back for tip top tree service. Shirley Ashton made a motion to go ahead and have tip top proceed trees and the city will pay them the $400 from the bill of $34. Sharon Willie seconded motion, carried five to zero. Bob Hall said that they got the carpet down. Legion Hall wants to take control of renting it out. They will have a permission form to sign up the deposit to rent out for Legion Hall. New business, Vicki Schutz wants to know if the city can give $100 to the Powhatan Church retreat for candy. Jackie Zimmer made a motion to give 100 and Sharon Willie seconded, carried five to zero. Wild Child wanted to know about the Powhatan Church water meter and why it was so high and getting charged 0 amount. Wild Child said the church usually, usually only uses around 100 gallons of water. First Vicki Schutz wanted to know why he had not contacted her instead of going through Shelley Dodge. Vicki Schutz will work on the church bill and go back to marks through September and look at it. Powhatan Church will only pay $12 for October and its services will not be interrupted if the payment is linked. Dale made a motion to have the clerk look over the water bill, seconded Sharon, carried five to zero. Vicki Schutz sent Luke Pollock yet another letter to bring the printer back, but the letter did not arrive on time as the letter bade. Joe Foster explained that to qualify for workforce compensation and employee must be actively employed and have earnings exceeding $20,000. Therefore, the city is not obligated to offer coverage for the Powhatan Fire Department. Dale talked with Stuart Rapperson and there was no overlap with city and the fire department. Dale wants the Powhatan Fire Department finances back to the city and Luke Pollock said he had no problem with finances going back to the Powhatan, going back to the city. And he also state, said that it is, that is the way it should be. Dale sheets asked Luke Pollock about the Powhatan Township planning amount. They get $13,200 for light, fuel and internet, water. Tracy Sharp received a letter asking for the timely submission and update of the DMRs. Tracy Sharp was talking with Deb about DMRs and helping him through the process. We found a workshop for Tracy to attend in the middle of November. We will discuss it next month about the workshop payment and of class and travel. Tracy talked to Ed and the work he had done with the muskrats and wondering if he could get paid. He worked up to 10 hours and a half was, half was one way and half back home. He did not see anything with the muskrats and will back, will come back to check if need be later on. Streets, Dale, Dale let the council know that they cleaned up the rock pile by the big shed. Shelley Dodge mentioned that the signs in Powhatan required repairs. The sign by Harry Brown has been gone for a while. It needs to, needs to be a speeding sign at 20 miles per hour. Parks, Jackie Zimmer, Sophie, Sean, Jim Hens, daughter wanted to rent the shelter house and park on Saturday for the funeral for her dad. Jackie Zimmer stated that Sean had done this, done things in the PD and been a member of the Powhatan Fire Department. She asked if Sophie could use the shelter house for free, citing her father's years of contribute, contributions to the city. Dale made a motion to allow Sophie to use the shelter house and park for free, seconded by Shelley Willie, approved five to zero. We also received a letter from Ruth and Roger, Roger Wolf Grant. Jackie Zimmer will see what we can produce to apply for the end, before the end of, end of November. Comments, thank you to Dale and Carol Sheets. Sheets, Sarah Bree, Kirby, Barry Schutz and the other community members for helping in the Powhatan Park. Park looks great. Sarah aim to provide the city with an update on recent achievements. The Legion names are now visible on the bench. Citizens use the dumpster and it will be collected later this week. Community members painted the park tables while shelter house was empty cleaning. Sarah will be making a wish list and making new signs for the shelter house. Next meeting is on November 3rd at 7:00 PM. Jackie Zimmer made a motion to adjourn it and Tracy Sharp seconded the motion, carried five to zero.
Note, next meeting is announced at the end of the arrangement of the minutes. Alright, we have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Yeah, the, where you were talking with me about the fire department finances. I believe I stated that that's the way most cities do it. Not that I expressed a direct opinion on whether it should or shouldn't be that way. Whether, I expressed that I would support the city taking over the fire department finances again or doing it that way, but I don't believe that I stated a, expressed opinion that I thought that was the way it should be. Does that clarification make, make sense Vicki?
Yes, I'll check the video as well.
Yep, that's, go back and verify that off the video. The other thing that I wanted to clarify in there, if you're gonna have that expression, I would like you to record for the record that I also had concerns due to cities declining to pay the insurance bill that was presented to them, is that, that was part of the conversation, just for the accuracy of the record. And if you go back to the video and make sure you get that direct off the video, that would, I appreciate that. I also believe the $13,200 is what the township pays. That's not specifically for lights, fuel and internet.
That's what you said. Cause I wrote everything down that you had said on that, so.
Again, we can go back to the video and verify.
Was there anything else that needed was on there?
That's the only things that I noted.
Okay, that's why I wrote down was the fuel, internet and lights that you had said.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure that it's accurate since you went into detail and I, that's fine, I just wanna make sure it's accurate and I'm happy for you to go back off the video.
Yep.
If I misspoke, I misspoke.
That's good. Okay, is there any other? Okay, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of trade. I have a motion to accept minutes of notification.
I said.
All in favor?
Okay, I do have a couple of correspondence.
Can I read the special meeting one?
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, that was right there. Okay. Okay, so, a request for special meeting government body meetings. We, the undersigned government body members of the city of Powhatan, Kansas, hereby respectfully request you to call a special meeting of the government body for the object and purpose of discussion of the attorney general's consent form and tip top tree removal bill. Meeting to take place on October 27th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And I also sent a, I sent two, I sent a text message to Luke and I also sent an email to Luke and he did not reply, but I did send those.
May regarding?
May regarding the city meeting, special meeting. The meeting of the Powhatan City Council met on October 27th, 2025 for a special meeting to talk about tip top tree service and Kansas general consent forms. Joe Foster started off with the flag salute and prayer. Shirley Ashton, Jackie Zimmer, Dale Sheets, Tracy Sharp, Shelley Dodge, city clerk, Vicki Schutz, Powhatan city, city treasurer, Vicki Schutz, Powhatan city clerk were present and Sharon Willie was absent.
I was late.
The guests present were Barry Schutz and Luke Pollock. Vicki Schutz wrote the consent form requesting special meeting. Every Powhatan council member must sign the documents for the proposed consent orders drafted by the Kansas Attorney General's Office, numbers 25OG0007 and 25OG0006. Afterward, the attorney general will sign them before they are sent to the Kansas Attorney General, or after the city, yeah, Sharon Ash, or Sharon Ashton made a motion to sign the consent forms for the, Shirley Ashton, may I already fix that one? Forms with Dale Sheets seconded the motion, carried four to four. The following council members will need to pay $75. Those checks were received on October 25th, 2025 for $75 for Dale, 75, Jackie, 75, Tracy, 75, Shirley, 75 and the Powhatan City for $150 will be sent along with the package. Vicki Schutz will contact Sharon Willie for her payment of $75. Tip top tree service took down, took down three out of the four trees and cleaned up. Dale and Carol and Dale Sheets helped cleaning up one of the trees and the park still had bees in it. The group agreed to keep the tree in place until spring to protect the bees. The bill for the tree removal was $3,400 with $8.50 for each tree. One of the trees hit the new backboards by the horseshoe pit, horseshoe pits and total three boards were total $200 of damage. The tree also hit the merryville round. Dale is asking the tip top tree service should pay $200 for damage and send, and will send another bill. Jackie Zimmer's made a motion that tip top tree service and send a new bill minus $200, seconded by Shirley Ashton, four to four. The city will only have to pay 32 instead of 34. Shirley Ashton motion to adjourn the special meeting. Jackie Zimmer seconded, carried four to four.
Cindy, additions or corrections to the minutes?
Where would we like to start? Uh, and then after all the stuff for the attorney general, she, she'd be the city lawyer.
Yes, I fixed that.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Dennis Winger also helped with the tree, tree removal.
Okay.
What was your, what was your comment?
Yes, I got that corrected too.
Jackie, what was your comment?
That it said here afterwards, the attorney general will sign them before they are sent to the Kansas attorney general.
Yes, that's correct.
And you're the city lawyer.
Yes, I'm correcting as well.
Motion to approve a special meeting minutes?
I know. With the correction.
Okay.
Okay, now I have the first one. Okay, so, when I did the water bills, I sent out a notification of known or potential service line containing lead triple. So I sent this out to all water bill people. Okay, and then I got this letter from Northeast Area AG. It said Northeast Kansas Area Agent, Area Agent, Agents on, agent is for, preparing a grant application to Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, for operational funding to support transportation services within our community. As part of the grant requirements, we are notifying you of our intent to apply for the funding. To strengthen our application, we encourage to include letters of support from local units of government in our service area. We kindly request your assistance by providing a letter to support this application. And it says, please send by Friday, November the 14th, either by mail or emailing. And he has sent a, there's, if you have any questions, I can give you her name and phone number and he also provided a letter to, I can type up and go live.
So that leaves us with Grand County, Cat's Island, whatever.
You're really good, like, I could take that. Two in front of Kansas City would have to give the treatments for $60. So, I mean.
The first that this is, I think that's a great deal. I think we should send a letter of, state, approve the, the motion.
Letter in attorney. The Northeast Agent.
On that motion, we sent a letter of encouragement to area agency on aging for, to, for. General.
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 Yeah, the general, yeah.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that just for the city or is that for anyone who wants to write a letter?
Anyway, for that. Um, it just says, we include letters of support from local units of government in our service area. So. So I just have to go by his guide, buy it over here and just put in, looks like our city date, some signatures from here. Alright, that's all I have on that.
Okay. Jackie, do you have any?
Do we have any unfinished business first? Do we have any unfinished business first? Is that yours unfinished business or is that new? Okay, so unfinished business. So Tracy, I got another letter for the DMRs.
Uh, yeah, I got it.
Five reports behind. You got them all turned in?
No, I'm still haven't hit this, contact with Deb. I'm still trying to figure out the greater than, lesser than stuff with her. Last time I talked to her, uh, IT had, uh, I don't know, they were doing something with her computer so she can look it up to explain it to me.
Old business, I got the bill from tip top tree service for the trees. What he did, he took $200 off of the removal of three trees and then put on the bill $8.50 the next spring when, once the tree removed. So, we got $2,000 from the grant. Do they send that money to tip top?
I talked to him today. He has to submit a W9 before greater than that, if they, and he's aware of that, so.
Okay, and then the $1,000 from Roger Wolf Grant went?
It's in, it's a refund, I'll have to transfer.
Okay, so we have to, $200 out of the city trying to get it carried on. Okay, motion to approve paying the street up. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, um, I was talking to the Kikapu. We're still working on procedures on that for him. And then I also, he also requested that I come up with some addresses for his tenants, the tenants of later of the trailers. So I called Brown County, I got addresses. I just came up with addresses for him and they're putting, they're also doing KEO boxes as well. So their water stuff can just go with them now, so. I got all that straight for him. And water meters, I sent an email to him stating that I needed numbers for the elementary, how many elementary kids he had, middle school, high school, how many staff members, kitchen help, custodians and anybody else. I didn't mention that force there. I just told him I need to know where they use the restrooms at, where they get the, how many lunches or if they bring in lunches, I don't know. So he will get back to me on that and then I can check on the meters again. And if not, we'll just, I told him, if they're the same, then we'll maybe just replace both of them. See what happens after that.
I have one other thing on old business. It's been, uh, around six weeks ago, they've moved the city tractor down there. A friend of mine was down in Omaha and they moved that on Friday. That's moved down by the limit two next to where we keep the city truck and the skid steer. So that's been moved.
That's a tractor that was all moved to park.
Yes. The rim, the one wheel in the back, passenger side was, was bad. Rim's rusted through, need a new rim there, but that's set for spring. I'd rather one to do with that. Anything else on old business? What about the search water situation?
Oh, yes. Um, I have been working on the church, Shirley and I worked on it the other day, but we, we came up with, with, the church had come up with something different, so we're gonna, I'm gonna have to go back and look again and go through the numbers, make sure I had them all and then I will get you, get together with you, Lyle, and then go over it and see if it matches or doesn't match and see where we need to fix or whatever.
And the credit, it'll be applied.
Yeah, and if there's a credit, then it'll be applied to it.
I do have a question about that. When was the last time there was something big going on at the church?
I didn't hear it.
When was the last time that there was a dinner or something going on at the church?
Any kind of funeral or celebration? I can't, anyway.
It's been a while, I don't know.
Well, the last one I can remember helping with was Marilyn Wingers.
Was it?
Marilyn Winger.
Yeah, that's probably the last one. And I don't even remember when that was. By this timeframe, that's all from that one? Let me look at that. Is that answer satisfactory for you, Luke? One second. Is that answer satisfactory for you? Is that answer satisfactory for you?
Well, I, I didn't hear everything, but, uh, what I heard was that you hadn't, it didn't match what I had, so.
Yeah, so it's gonna be corrected one way or the other. And you, you got, credit is coming, it, it.
Okay, I'd like to see what your figures are.
Yeah, I, I said, once I get it fixed, fixed, we can go over and see. Yeah. Yep.
Any other old business? Oh, I might add that, that.
Hadn't much to get that done.
I do work a job and my boss has been sick for a couple of weeks, so I have to work and I'm one pair of doing two jobs. So it's, I'm tired, I get home. And if that's not satisfactory to people that don't work, then it's okay.
It's okay. It's all right.
Okay. Did you, did I talk to Sarah? Sarah, did we say he's had experience on, on, uh, helping the schools in that work of a emergency program?
Oh, yes, I do have that letter she gave me. So yeah, we're still working with him on that.
We had to do plans as administrators, that's, that's not for me to give him a plan. That's his job as, as the superintendent to come up with the plan, that's, yeah. That's not your job as a city, the city doesn't hand out the plan to the building administrators. Dr. Kramer does hers for the schools, so I can be irrelevant to giving a plan, he probably, he.
He does have plans, he just needs to get them updated with different superintendents coming in and out.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I just told him, if we had emergency, different spots for him to go, then we come up with that, all right?
Need more old business? Okay, new business?
Oh, it's Roger Wolf, saying, I had David Barnes give me a couple bids. Or I asked him for a bid and he gave me two, which council people have. And so, I'm gonna have to ask you for help on some of this, I'm sure.
That's due at the end of the month and we're, I'm kinda at capacity, I've got two other projects going on. I can, you can use kinda what you submitted before, I'll, I'll try as best I can, but I'm not.
Is it, is it just papers to fill out or just a letter or?
It's an application, you mean?
It's an application, yeah, it's just a couple, three questions.
Oh, I can help with that.
Yeah, it should be.
I think we've, I've done that before, so it should be, yeah, it should be fine. When's the deadline?
Thirty, thirty. Some of the things you want, they wanted the name of the entry, address, phone number, email address. Prove a tax exempt status, sales tax exemption is not sufficient. Amount of funds requested, purpose of grant, detailed description of project, slash activities, duration of project activity, estimated number of people benefited by such grant, total cost of the project and the activity.
Um, yeah, I review all that.
There's my thing to do.
Yeah. She's got the access to the.
Yeah, I can get that.
Tax exempt, I'll have to, whatever.
So do you need to go over?
Yes, I haven't got that for you.
Okay, just go.
Well, David brought me two bids, one's the walls, cabinet's unfinished, it's two hundred and four dollars. The new faucet is seventy-six dollars, countertop sixty-eight forty-four. Cabinet paint thirty-three ninety-eight. Labor installed and finished is three twenty-five, three hundred and twenty-five dollars, a total of seven hundred and seven dollars and twenty-two cents. And you got one from Edmonds in Sebetha, this is a finished cabinet, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Faucet hundred and twenty-five dollars. Countertop six hundred and five dollars. Labor two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Total cost one thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars. So I need to have a vote on which one the council want.
I have, uh, David also gave me that, then I was here working, he gave me a copy and I see on there that he didn't include a new sink. So I called him and asked him about that and he said, he, he did refusing the old sink with the new faucet. And, uh, I think if we're gonna apply for a grant for that, we need to apply with the new sink. I asked him what a new sink would be and it'd be, he said it had two hundred dollars to that bill if you want a new sink, both.
Both of them.
Both of them. So that is make the one bid, nine oh seven and change because of tax. The other one fifteen oh three, no.
No, I think it'd be sixteen.
No, it'd be one ninety. Sixty, yeah, sixteen eighty-three changed the tax. So, if we're gonna apply for the grant, I gave us a thousand dollars for tree removal this last year. We're not taking a figure, apply for a thousand dollar grant for the new fish and sink and basin and shelter house, having covered the cheaper of the two bids. And you know, it's used, it's currently, so that should, that should be fine, that's my opinion.
My only question is, do we want it painted or do we want it varnished?
Yeah.
How about?
Again, as it frequently says, it's used, I think painting would be okay. Again, that's my opinion. Or you can, you can go sixteen hundred and, seventeen hundred dollars for the other bid, see what they get. But there's, it seems to be an unreasonable difference between the, the countertop. I know, I'm not sure what the, what the difference is. What that difference? Name.
Six forty-five and then the other one sixty-eight, so that's what. So everyone's just really hiring.
Yeah, I'm getting hired. I, I think we need to do some more checking on that, those prices are different to, for people on that. We gotta have it by.
We haven't had it in, I need it this month. Yeah.
I think they do that in February or March, I think you'll know if you got the, the grant or not.